As the land of the Ho'ang people, please take a moment to celebrate and honor this ancestral Ho'ang land and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Abraham?
Here.
Ms. Baumann?
Here.
Ms. Como?
Here.
Dr. Cooper Stoll?
Here.
Dr. Jimenez?
Here.
Ms. Leahy?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Corburg?
Here.
Mr. Spivey?
Absent. A quorum of the Board of Education is present, so the regularly scheduled meeting, April 4th, 2022, is called to order, and we'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move to approve the agenda as presented. Tonight's agenda has previously been distributed to the Board with a motion by Mr. Corburg and a second by Ms. Como. We will move to approve the agenda as submitted unless there's a motion to amend. Is there a motion to amend? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has carried. We'll move on to public speakers. It is the policy of the Board to provide at its public meetings an opportunity for individuals to address the Board. Comments about individual staff or personnel will not be allowed. Open meeting law prohibits the Board from engaging in discussion or responding to matters not included on the agenda. All speakers are reminded that this same policy limits your time to speak to five minutes. This limit will be strictly enforced, and may I ask the superintendent to keep track of the time and notify the speaker when time is running out?
Hello?
Thank you. You're also asked to give your name and the school district where you reside at the beginning of your time for the public record. Our first speaker tonight is Adam Menka.
Alright, my name is Adam Menka, and I'm in support of having SROs in the schools with the petition to bring them back. I came today to finally submit the petition to the School Board, which has gained the support of over three hundred students, staff, and even a few parents. To those who have not heard, this petition was started in response to our third threat directed at La Crosse Central this year, and since then has focused over on the general safety of students in La Crosse. This year's students faced a rough start in the first semester as we moved to get rid of SROs, removing two this year and pushing to remove another next year. Vandalism has become a large issue in La Crosse Central this fall. Bathrooms in particular were targeted by students to take whatever they wanted: toilet paper, soap, and paper towels. Among these, I have a few evidence of order here. This bathroom right here has lost its toilet due to vandalism, and this one right here was shut down with quarter-inch steel barricades that stopped students from coming in because that's how bad it was. Several bathrooms have also been attacked with graffiti, and one of which still proudly is displayed in the boys' bathroom next to the cafeteria with very vulgar drawings of genitals. How come parents didn't hear much about this, and the risk disposed to students and the school as a whole? Another issue that comes to mind is bullying and threats inside of our schools. As schools got rid of their SROs, bullying increased, and at Central, there's a clear palpable rise. One example is in January, when a student was beaten to the ground with a bloody nose, all because of a water bottle. During this situation, the students never came to help, and instead they recorded the incidents on their phone and circling the crying student. It wasn't until two teachers called the SRO and that he was able to help the students. And these incidents are more common this year than in others. During the school year, three incidents of threats have come to our schools. Two of them were found to be targeting different Central High Schools, but one was from a student at our own school. When a student hacked another student's laptop and... When a student hacked another student's laptop and threatened to blow up the school, going as far to write down a list of what to use for shooting and a pipe bomb. The most recent threat on January 3rd, the first day back from winter break, called the entire school to be evacuated, and following the next day, several students refused to come back in fear. We did not notice any changes at that point to keep us safer. And how come even after this, nothing was done in order to protect our students in case of an actual live bomb? It has come to the point where students have to advocate for themselves, as a few members of the School Board have been evading this issue since we started. There is a clear divide between those who have been paying attention to our schools and who are not. While the petition is open to everyone, a few members here kindly dodged questions. Some brushed this aside to attempt to justify this as only a single perspective. Hundreds of students are not a single perspective. Instead, they are a large consensus of our school. Students within the schools are advocating to keep SROs, but outside organizations such as LIT, which called for the end of policing not only locally but nationally. These organizations can only ineffectively cite race as the reason to get rid of SROs, and their arguments have almost never questioned the effectiveness of the SROs. They never use graphs or data to back their reasoning. When they came and talked to the students during Diversity Week, they never used a single number or graph and instead tried to push their ideology on students. These people miss the point of why SROs are in the schools. SROs are not officers meant to arrest students, but they help our stressed-out staff in situations where they cannot resolve issues themselves. Their responsibility falls with making sure students are safe in emergencies. These officers also keep in touch with students, making better relationships between officers and students. They give students a second chance as where others have abandoned them. When they come to school, they come with a mission of a better tomorrow and do what must be done to guarantee we pass high school the best we can, just as any other teacher. Part of the SRO program has helped make us better citizens. In my freshman year, our SRO helped our health teacher with topics we needed to know for our own health. When he speaks to students, he doesn't speak like an officer of authority, but instead as a friend. Often, students hang out in his office just to talk to him like friends. He is the embodiment of great student interaction with police officers, and he isn't the only one. Just the other day, the Police Department worked for our mental health thanks to Captain Avery Schultz. Another misconception is that SROs feed the school's prison pipeline. This is simply not true. They don't suspend students for they don't even have the authority to suspend them. And that's on the administration, on the School Board, and the policy. But even then, the principals have already admitted that no students have been suspended and kicked out of school at all this year, much less last year, even after the height of crimes perpetrated in schools. Time and time again, we see this narrative fall apart. Kids need safety in schools, and as they have been abandoned by the School Board, we need to take action in order to keep every child safe when entering buildings. To conclude, we, the students, want and need the SRO program to keep our schools safe. Everything we've done will be submitted to the public as soon as we can in our petition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mason Muth.
Hi, my name is Mason Muth, freshman at Central High School. Can I start this off with a question? How many of you know a school resource officer? I do too. And they are not the only ones at risk of losing their jobs. The SROs are being removed from the district. There used to be five, now that number is slowly decreasing, and we don't want that. Another question, how many of you have a child or are involved in the school district? For students like me, the SROs create a safe and secure environment for all of us. They can also be someone we can look up to in Central. In December, the school district released a school resource officer program evaluation and identifying a number of actions I would be taking if the SRO program were to continue. These recommendations included the implementation of an SRO advisory committee made up of community members. The La Crosse Police Department had five school resource officers that worked in conjunction with the La Crosse School District to ensure a safe learning environment. These officers are truly part of the school community, with their duties expanding well beyond enforcement to include preventative classroom instruction on topics of gang resistance, education and training, and other alternative summer programming. With the SROs in the school, kids like me are less likely to use illegal drugs, tobacco products like vaping or smoking, and drink alcoholic beverages. As well as ensuring the safety of students and have them less likely to end up in violence, rather included against them and other students, make students less likely to end up with a criminal record, and make them more likely to feel safe and welcome at the school. As well, help with the diversity of students, rather ethnic groups, sexual orientation, and gender. They are there to protect students against hate speech from other students, hate violence and/or hate crimes against them. There's one more thing I should bring up: the school-to-prison pipeline. The notion of a school-to-prison pipeline is based on two linked claims, neither of which withstand rigorous empirical scrutiny. First, that the disparity in the school discipline is based on teacher bias rather than student behavior. Second, that school suspension should cause negative long-term outcomes, but you cannot generalize all that into one thing. It is very case by case. The way a student takes an arrest from the school can be in many ways, negative, positive, or as an learning experience. The school-to-prison pipeline is a term used to refer to the trend in school discipline policies that push students out of school and on a pathway to prison. Often, zero tolerance policies in the school are to blame, since these policies mandate school officials to administer strict, often harsh punishment, not the people just trying to do their job. The statistics say that students arrested by an officer are more likely to become criminals. But they do not take into account why students are being arrested. The reasons students are arrested this year could be vandalism, shooting threats, bomb threats, and many year. This year alone, Central itself has added three threats, even having to evacuate. Mr. Gillian had us evacuate, which was a great decision on his part, but if we do not have the officers there, then those threats become a real thing. What happens then? The students cannot defend themselves against an active threat. That is why we need the officers for protection. As stated by edweek.org, an estimated three million children in the U.S. are exposed to shootings per year. There were thirty-four school shootings in 2021, twenty-four of which occurred after August. This is a rising problem. In the last decade, four hundred twenty-six school shootings have happened. That's about forty-two point six a year. Now, that may seem a lot, but you also have to take into account that students have three months off for summer, so that's now four point seven per month of the school year. That's at least one per week. It has more than doubled since 1979. But there's one last thing I should bring up: fights. Of students, fifty-three point three percent said they had fought one time, twenty-seven point eight percent two or three times, ten point one percent four or five times, and ten point one percent six or more times. Male students, twelve point two percent, are significantly more likely than female students, three point six percent, to report having been in a fight. And it's happening here too. I hear or see fights almost every day. I've even had to split up fights between people I know. And I don't mean arguments, I mean violent fights. All in all, we need the school resource officers to stay in the school, because without them, it gives more opportunity for violence, drug use, shootings, suspensions, expulsions, and fights in everyday schools for all students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Kayden Young.
My name is Kayden Young. I'm a junior at Central High School. First off, I would like to talk about the events on January 3rd this year. As one of the students who was there on that day, I can speak for almost any student who was there that day when I say the emotions, the concern, the fear that was felt that day was enormous to come back to from a break. It wasn't expected, but I did notice whenever the school talked about it the day after, a couple, like a month later, there was another threat. I looked back at what the announcement about that subject was. It was the same speech that was made to talk about the event of January 3rd, a copy and paste. This makes me question how much the school cares about the safety and more to, let's say, representation and other stuff. This is when we started the petition, to show that we wanted a safe school to come to without fear of violence or when we could be attacked. Now, we know why the school wants to remove the SROs, and this has to do with the events that happened in the summer of 2020. But I believe that we, as people, tend to take one bad thing of a person or group and blame it all on that thus wanting that gone. But I believe that that is Now, the SROs, especially from what I've seen, have done nothing to betray the trust of the students and the staff. They aren't there to necessarily be police. They are there to be mentors, counselors. They are not meant to make the student fear them, like how the impression of a police officer would be, but to help them through the thing they did or to help them through the time they're going through. We believe that if the SROs are taken away, the amount of violence in our schools, in the school district, will rise greatly, and the amount of threats may return. Which is why we ask that the Board reinstates the SROs. I do have a chart of total amount of threats or threat calls made from, in 2021, 2022, from September 1st to June 10th. The amount for Central High, three. Logan High, one. Logan Middle, one. Hinkin Elementary, one. Polytechnic, one. Spence Elementary, one. Hamilton Elementary, one. Longfellow Middle, one. And I do have a chart of the amount by year, starting from 2012 to 2013. 2013, one. 2012 to 2013, one. 2013 to 2014, zero. 2014 to 2015, two. 2015 to 2016, zero. 2016 to 2017, one. 2017 to 2018, one. 2018 to 2019, zero. 2019, 2022. 2020, 2021, one. I believe that due to the pandemic-
Thank you very much for your time. We've reached the five-minute mark. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jack Murphy.
Hi, my name is Jack Murphy, and I'm a junior at Central High School. And I'm here to talk about keeping SROs. SROs are an important part of keeping our schools safe. They deal with anything from fights to vandalism to drugs and even threats of violence that plague our schools. This is my first year at Central High School. I transferred from another local area high school to have some new opportunities that Central could offer me. I knew about the plan to remove them by old school and never looked at it positively. It wasn't until this year that I was really able to see what SROs did in the schools. I received nothing but a sense of respect and transparency from our SRO. He's someone that I feel students can look up to and learn from. Our SRO's door is always open, with visitors welcome at any time. He's always open to talk, whether that be about a situation that happened in the hall, classroom, sporting event, or any other concern. But he isn't there for just concerns. He's there for any conversation that you might want to have. Anything from my teachers assigning too much homework to the Bucks game over the weekend. And he's not just there as an officer, but also as a human who is willing to have any conversation. On December 7th, 2020, the superintendent, backed by Hogan Administration and you, the School Board, began a process of reducing SROs within our schools. Later in that same year, the Board reduced the number of SROs from five to three within the district to possibly cut that number down even more. At the beginning of the year, vandalism was a widespread problem throughout schools all across America, resulting in deep concerns from teachers, administrators. Students stole soap dispensers, mirrors, and a wide variety of other objects. And even today, the school refuses to resupply in fear of more vandalism, even with a bathroom boarded up on the second floor of Central High School. But this wasn't the beginning. November 11th, 2021, Central was forced to shut down over a threat. Although it was later deemed a hoax, deeper concerns spread throughout the community when on January 2nd, 2022, all students had to evacuate from Central High School. February then saw materials to make a pipe bomb found in possession of a student. These threats are just a small minority that affects our surrounding area and the rest of the nation. Last fall, Central received a possible threat from social media. This threat was later deemed to be posed from a student in Aurora, Colorado. The La Crosse Police and School District investigated and took the threat seriously. Later on November 15th, 2021, six students were shot and injured at that Central High School in Aurora, Colorado. Two SROs had responded and provided medical attention, even applying tourniquets to the students. This shows that threats can be real and pose real dangers to our schools. And this is one situation that we hopefully rely on at SRO to mitigate the possibility of a harmful situation. During our push to keep the SROs, we have gained over three hundred signatures from students and teachers, all with the goal of showing you that the school backs keeping the SROs. We have gained positive feedback and compliments towards our actions. Even though the teachers and students who spend every day in the schools have openly expressed that they want to keep our SROs, higher-up administrators keep listening to organizations such as Leaders Igniting Transformation, who aren't even from the La Crosse area and originally reside in Milwaukee. These individuals are in the schools all day and don't truly know what it's like to attend Central High School. When LIT came and talked to her during Diversity Week, they talked on the SRO program in the schools. All they tried to do was to push her agenda on the student body, never showed a real piece of evidence to remove SROs. A talking point that LIT likes to bring up is the school-to-prison pipeline. This is the idea that suspensions and expulsions lead to a higher chance of students ending up in prisons. The decision to suspend or expel a student is up to administrators, not the SROs. SROs can play an important role in early childhood development as well. They teach gang resistance education and training, also known as GRADE, and drug abuse resistance education or DARE. They hold summer classes teaching this course to the community. I would like to take a moment to thank officers Gilliam, Nedlin, Perk, Pyle, and Weaver for their continued support in guiding us all throughout high school. Thank you for your time, and I hope this speech is helpful when it finally comes time to vulnerable SROs.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We will move on the agenda to our school showcase. I believe we have two students who will be presenting from Logan High School.
That is correct. Today, we have Rebecca Urkey and Leah Pash here, representing the National Honor Society and Interact, to talk about service projects being done at Logan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leah Pash, and I'm the treasurer of Logan's Interact Club.
My name is Rebecca Urkey, and I'm a member of the National Honor Society and the secretary of our Interact Club.
Interact is a Rotary International Service Club for young people ages fourteen to eighteen. Interact Clubs are sponsored by individual Rotary Clubs and communities, and they provide support and guidance. Interact has a mission of bringing together young people to develop leadership skills and discovering the power of service above self. And so today, we're going to touch on some of our past projects and even some of our upcoming events.
On March 19th, Logan High School's Interact Club, National Honor Society, held its annual spring craft fair. We had over three hundred booths. The Logan High School NHS members helped set up, take down, and run the craft fair. All the money that was raised goes back into scholarships. On average, fifteen thousand dollars is raised between the fall and spring craft fairs. And the parent organization puts every penny raised back into Logan High School's scholarships.
Last May, the Logan High School Interact Club partnered with a nonprofit organization called Souls for Souls. We collected shoes that were donated by community members and sent them to women in developing countries to start and sustain small businesses throughout the sales of shoes. Within the span of three days, we collected over eleven hundred pairs of shoes, all to be redonated again.
National Honor Society service project for the month of December was a holiday gift drive. NHS members bought children from Northside Elementary School Christmas gifts, and we collectively bought over fifty kids' gifts to brighten their holidays.
One of our bigger projects that we host every year is called iFeed. iFeed is a large, community-wide food collection and food packaging project hosted by Interact. Usually, the food donations are packaged and given to people in need in Nicaragua, but this year we couldn't execute that plan, so we made some changes. We decided to donate the food that was collected to local food pantries. This year, we collected over fifteen thousand cans and raised over twelve thousand dollars, all to be donated.
On February 24th, the Red Cross partnered with Logan High School's National Honor Society to put on a blood drive. NHS members were encouraged to donate or have someone donate for them. We collectively raised forty-seven desperately needed units of blood during a national blood shortage. This blood helped save lives of people around the community. Those are just a handful of our past volunteer projects. We have two upcoming events that we are very excited about.
So one of our bigger projects that we're working on is a tree replenish, and this is a new event to the Interact Club, and our goal is to sell and plant ninety trees to offset our school's paper usage for two years. So the first forty-five trees are paid for by the Logan Interact Club, and then the other forty-five trees are five dollars and can be ordered by anyone in the community. We were offering a hack- We were offering hackberry trees, common apple trees, and black bear each, black cherry trees. And the, um, the pickup day for that is April first. May first, they would do it April first. It's May first. We're excited about that. Um, and then on Wednesday, um, April sixth, uh, so soon, Interact and the National Honor Society members are going to pick up trash around. The Logan High School campus. Um, often trash left on the streets ends up in our rivers and marshes and this is just a little step we can take to help our community. Clean and it's just something to do that, to get the groups together, I guess. Um, thank you guys for listening and those are some of our projects. Yeah, thank you.
Any questions for that?
Are there any questions for our presenters from the board members?
So how did you become involved? And, and um, Interact?
Alright, so I started, my neighbor Pat Bogie, um. Is um, very involved with Rotary and she kind of recruited me in eighth grade and kind of. Pushed me into Interact and encouraged me to run for office and try to become a leader.
I didn't start until the end of last year, so the end of my sophomore year and I kind of fell in love with it. We. Uh, kind of like put ourselves out there and did like every single volunteer project that we could that was offered to us. Um. Yeah, a lot of thanks to Pat Bogie. She, when we couldn't drive, she would give us rides to all the volunteer events and. Um, she was very helpful through it all. But then um, also a lot of thanks to the, our president and vice president right now. John and Will, they kind of recruited us as well to come up with them and be a leader.
Thanks.
Do you have a Facebook page or anything to like help advertise those trees or?
Yeah, so uh, we have a Facebook page and I think it's just called Logan High Interact Club. We also have an Instagram handle and then for our tree replenish, we actually have a whole website dedicated to that. That tree replenish um, like gave to us, I guess. Um, so if anyone's interested, you could just look up like Logan High School Tree Plenish and.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any other questions for our presenters? Not hearing anything. Thank you.
Yes, thank you guys.
Thank you. And we understand if you want to take off and maybe miss the, if you don't want to stick around for the rest of the board meeting, it's entirely understandable. We know you're all very busy.
Thank you. We'll move on uh, on our board agenda to the superintendent's consent agenda. Make a motion to approve the items on the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
The consent agenda is a mechanism used by the board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. Are there any items that the board members want to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none with a motion by Mr. Corberg and a second by Ms. Como, the items on the superintendent consent agenda are approved as presented unless there's objection. Is there any objection? Hearing none, they are adopted. We will move on to the board consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the items on the board consent agenda as presented.
Second.
With the, oh, are there any items that the board members want to remove from the board consent agenda? Hearing none with the motion by Mr. Corberg and the second by Ms. Como, the items on the board consent agenda are approved as presented unless there is objection. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the items on the board consent agenda are approved. Move on to uh, matters reserved for board action. So six point oh one is a resolution declaring official intent. To reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing.
I will turn this over to Ms. Spring, who is the expert here.
Okay, so as we progress towards perhaps a referendum next November. This is a, a protection for the district in case we have any expenses. Prior to the actual um, approval of the referendum that we could get reimbursed. So if we have to use district funds prior to that, this just enables us to get reimbursed through that borrowing process.
Any questions from the board members? Mr. Abraham.
So what if the referendum fails and, and we'd, and we authorize and spend money, that, that just comes out of the general account then, or?
Out of the fund balance.
Other questions?
Make a motion to adopt the resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing.
Is there a second?
Second.
With a motion by Ms. Como and a second by Mr. Corberg. We will move to adopt the resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from the proceeds of borrowing. We will have a roll call vote.
Excuse me, Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Ms. Baumann.
Aye.
Ms. Como.
Aye.
Dr. Cooper Stoll.
Aye.
Ms. Leahy.
Aye.
Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Corberg.
Aye.
Mr. Spivey.
Aye.
Dr. Jimenez.
Aye. Motion is passed. We'll move on to policy approval. First reading, G C four officers' roles. I'll make a motion to grant first reading approval for the policy approval for G C four officers' roles.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Corberg and a second by Ms. Como to grant first reading approval for policy approval for G C four officers' roles. Any uh, discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so when we decided to um. Uh, have the governor, uh, Governance Officer role, we, it was one year. So I, so then it has to go back. So I was just wondering if you could talk to the board about what you see happening with that. Uh, debriefing piece so that board members can be prepared for that.
Great question, Dr. Cooper Stoll. I appreciate you brought that up. So what I would see uh, moving forward, I believe. Well, quite honestly, I think it's going to be for whoever the next president is to decide.
Okay.
Right? Um, I mean, if, if I were to be the president, I think what I would like to see is a rotation of the board members taking. Uh, turns with the, with the debriefing. I think it'd be a good conversation for a workshop as a board to talk about what does that look like? And how do we want to handle that? But I think it's premature for me to, to say that I'm going to be the president. I think we'll have to wait for the reorganization meeting. And then maybe just determine a, a workshop right after that. So, but it's a great question. I think, you know, with the Governance Officer being removed, we do have to discuss what does that look like.
Yes.
So thank you very much for bringing that up. Any other questions or comments on this first reading of G C four?
What would we do, let's say, if the board decided that we do not want to get rid of the Governance Officer? I mean, I know we put it in for a year, so what would the process to? Extend it for another year?
Um, of what I would say is then a move to defeat this motion. So you can uh, vote this motion down. By voting this motion down, you can maintain the Governance Officer role. Okay. Any other questions?
What would you see as the benefit of doing that, Mr. Spivey? I'm just curious.
I guess as, you know, one of the, I mean, not newer anymore, right? But um, when I think about this role, I think that um, the Governance Officer kind of serves as a little bit of support for the board. So like, even when, you know, uh, there's certain discussions or if there's certain processes that. You know, not everybody like newer board members are aware of. Um, having this role kind of remind us of that, I think is really good. And it doesn't always have to land on the president to be able to do that, so. It's my take, I guess.
I think that that is important input. That's also. I mean, you need sort of folks who are also familiar with that.
Alright.
Well familiar with that in order to do that as, as well. And I wonder if you'd be able to just. Those folks may not always want to serve in that role, but I, I was just curious as to like, I'm to- I'm open to what your thoughts are about that.
Right, and, and remember that we brought this forward because we did say it was going to be for a year, right? So it really is coming forward. In front of the board because we said the Governance Officer role was for a year, so.
And I do not want to serve as the Governance Officer.
So there, there is nothing saying that it has to be removed, right? And there's nothing within the bylaws that says it can only be in there for a year. The board can decide to remove this officer role at any time. It can also.
Add it back to.
Correct. It can also add it back at any time. So it's just up to the board to decide how it wants to proceed.
Okay.
Alright, so all those in favor of granting first reading approval for policy approval G C four. So I'm going to ask Ms. Stagerwald a question just to verify, because you're going to be kind of my, or who is our parliamentarian on the board? I can't ask myself a question. So if we're, so to get to Mr. Spivey's question, I mean, my understanding would be that if we were to. Vote this down, there's still a second reading. And it really would be at that second reading that we would vote. That vote would determine whether we would maintain this position or not, depending on whether that vote is. Yea or nay. Is that correct?
That would be my understanding, yes.
Okay, so all we're really doing right now is just granting the reading, the first reading approval. We are not necessarily doing anything with the position during this vote.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure everybody's aware that we're not doing anything with the position at this point in time. We are just granting the approval of the reading. The next time we get together, because it has to be two readings. That's when we will actually make the decision to vote the Governance Officer position to move forward or to be removed. Are we clear? Any questions on that? Okay, so all those in favor to grant first reading approval for policy approval G C four officers' roles, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion has carried. We'll move on to the information item, Operational Expectation Monitoring Report, O E one, Global Operation Expectation. I'll turn it over to Dr. Engel.
So this, like our other O Es and results policies, is a part of our monitoring process for the school board. And this is the most general uh, monitoring policy. So Global Operational Expertate Expectation, Superintendent shall not cause, allow, or fail to take reasonable measures to prevent any practice, activity, decision. Or organizational condition that is unlawful, unethical, unsafe, disrespectful, and prudent in violation of board policy. Or endangers the district's public image or credibility. So just a, a few indicators here, just five. The first, uh, the district is compliant with one hundred percent of state, federal, and DPI laws and regulations. Attached is a compliance letter indicating that we attest that that is so, as well as the financial audit. Which um, is, reviews all of our practices uh, as it relates to compliance with state, federal, and DPI laws and regulations. The second indicator is the board upon evaluation of O E policies finds no significant violation of non-compliance with any of the policies. Uh, there is the three-year monitoring report summary, which indicates. Uh, the disposition that the board took on each of those policies. And while there are some in there, um, met with uh, exceptions. Uh, by and large, uh, our uh, position is that we were compliant uh, in that process. Indicator three, no legal charges or formal regulatory complaints against the district result in a finding of negligence. Or an intentional violation of federal, state, or local law. We submitted a compliance documentation letter indicating that that was the case. Indicator four, no written complaints against the superintendent are presented to and substantiated by the board. Uh, the compliance documentation letter indicates that that was the case. And then lastly, district employees are terminated due to unethical, illegal, or unprofessional conduct violations. Uh, and our compliance letter indicates that we had no need to terminate an employee for one of those reasons this year.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, then just, this is more a straw poll again, just determining, are we feeling comfortable with where we're at with this operational expectation? And that we will vote on it in the next meeting. Seems pretty straightforward. No, doesn't look like anybody has any concerns that I'm seeing, okay? Sounds good, then we will vote on this at our next meeting. So then I will turn it over to Ms. Baumann for our first announcements of the evening.
Yes, I just have a few. Um, on April twelfth, the Gold Star Grants will be announced, so keep an eye on the news. And the L P E F website and following that, I'll do a little debrief on some of the grants that were awarded. Um, also, L P E F is planning Thank a Teacher Day for uh, Tuesday, May third. So there'll be more information coming for the board, um, in case anyone would be interested in getting involved. That's all I have for today.
Right, thank you very much. Uh, my announcements, there is a lot going on for the school board this month. We, on April sixth, will have a linkage. With the Central High School students at two thirty P M in the L M C. On April eighth, we will have a linkage with the La Crosse Polytechnic High School students at one thirty P M in the loft. On April nineteenth, we will have our Board of Education meeting. Please realize that is rescheduled. Uh, it's on a Tuesday as opposed to a Monday. Um, so April nineteenth is a Tuesday. That's our Board of Education meeting at six P M here in the auditorium. April twentieth, we will have a linkage with Logan High School students at two thirty P M in the Future Center area. And on April twenty-fifth, at seven P M will be the Board of Education Reorganization Meeting here in the auditorium. So quite a uh, jam-packed April for the school board. And then I'll turn it over to Superintendent Engel for his announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Jimenez. Uh, two announcements. One, April is School Library Month. Uh, would like to recognize the incredible work our school librarians do, uh, not only in helping students learn about library. Uh, processes and procedures, picking out the just right read for them. But also in executing our High Performance Learning Program. And so they do an incredible job in our buildings and we're thankful for all that they do. Uh, and very important, tomorrow, April fifth, is the spring election. There are school board elections going on, so we encourage everyone to get out and vote.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to agenda planning. Make a motion to approve the April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two Board of Education Agenda with any additions or corrections.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Corberg, second by Ms. Como, to approve the April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two Board of Education Agenda with any additions or corrections. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has carried. We'll move on to the board debriefing. Dr. Cooper Stoll?
I don't know that I have much to contribute tonight since the board portion was um, kind of limited. But what I would say is that especially as we move to the conversation around uh, changing policy uh, with the Governance Officer role. It's just a great time for board members to review the information contained in board docs regarding uh, debriefing and be familiar with that.
And I think the only other thing is hopefully, um, I will do my best uh, with the last few meetings here. If there's parliamentary questions, I will try to explain those as we go through like the, the first reading of the officer position. Just making sure we're all clear about what we're voting on. Uh, if you have questions, please ask. So that we make sure we're, we know what we're voting on. Don't ever hesitate to ask those questions. I'd rather have those questions decided at the table. So with that, I believe we are adjourned and we will be uh, adjoint, uh, we will be upstairs. Uh, Ms. Stagerwald, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Alright, thank you so much. We are adjourned.